Gathered here tonight in the Hampden Academy Library with only board members, Superintendent Nichols and Assistant Superintendent Boone for the reason that this is all we can accommodate in here tonight and still safely social distance. We'll be joined online by our Google administrators, so if we have questions for them, they'll be available on the phone. Just a couple of notes as we get started. I'll be asking for public comment later in the agenda. When we get to that point, we'll ask everyone to keep that within two minutes. If you haven't already signed up, please do so in the chat and bear with us because we do have a lot of folks that want to speak tonight. So please sign up now and we'll take you in the order that you signed up.
Can we just pause for a moment for having sound issues? Is that because people are logging in?
It's the noise. We're having a little bit of technical difficulty, so bear with us.
Keith, are you unmuted?
Nope, I can hear him fine.
So for those of us in the room and not on the chat, can everyone just really project their voice for us?
In the room. Yep, it's a deep mask or new stuff.
I know.
Yeah, so yeah, we forget. We go native.
Hold on.
Chat is going up above.
A lot of people in chat saying they have enough trouble hearing.
Which are riveting, as you know.
Isn't it supposed to be the same when you for the government have time?
I think we should pause the meeting.
Yep. Let's, we're gonna take a quick technical break here and we'll be back in one moment.
Once we're established at six feet, are we able to unmask while speaking in the mic?
No.
No. We're following the guidelines. Anyone, we get in here a couple hours and we need to take a break, let me know. We'll pick up and then very quickly.
Getting YouTube, YouTube sound seems okay. The white house. Yep, same here. Nate, do you think it was the people logging into the Google chat that was causing the owl to cut in and out?
I think that's exactly what it was.
There's no way I can set these from, I don't know, from administrator, I don't know if you can turn off the alert.
Please do a log down. He's trying to be door question. Have you tried to call him? Hi Jim. Are you there? Yep, school board meeting tonight. Well, we're all in person if you want to run down. We're in person if you want to run down. Although the YouTube sound seems to be much better than the Google Meet sound.
Can you send it back to the console?
I wasn't aware we had a board meeting tonight.
It's gotta be another 10 minutes, so he'll.
He's gonna come though. The door's question might work.
I'm still didn't know, so YouTube is still out on audio.
There's multiple people that said they can hear, so it might be the end user.
I had turned the YouTube down during the break. It's back on now.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Should I start right over then or was it so bad that nobody heard?
Yes, I believe so.
We good?
Okay.
All right, so welcome back everyone. I hope the sound is better. If it is not, YouTube, people will tell us that the YouTube channel is much better than what you hear from us on Google. So I'm just gonna start over. Welcome everyone to our school board meeting of August 12, 2020. We're here tonight gathered in the Hampden Academy Library. School board members, Superintendent Nichols and Assistant Superintendent Boone. And for the reasons of physical distancing and trying to get a good venue to get a reasonable sound quality for Google Meet, we've decided to meet here in the library and we don't really have a lot of room, so for that reason, we're here alone. We're here tonight to talk about our school reopening plan. We'll have time later in the agenda for public comment. At that time, we're gonna ask everyone to keep it under two minutes. If you haven't already signed up, please do so on the chat and we'll give you an opportunity to speak at that time. That being said, we are all present at the moment except for Jim Bain and Jim will be joining us momentarily. So with that being said, we have motion to approve our minutes from last meeting.
So moved.
Second.
So John is moved and Rob has seconded. We have discussion? Mary Ann?
We never adjourned. We never came back to the regular meeting and adjourned, so the minutes stating that are incorrect.
Well, yeah.
I make a motion to adjourn.
So Tony has moved that we, yeah, okay.
We adjourn our meeting from?
We adjourned the last meeting. Mary Ann, second?
Second.
Mary Ann has seconded, so that's taken care of. And you were right, Mary Ann, and that is my fault. We got into executive session and then when everything, we should have gone back.
I could have sworn I made a motion because that's kind of my thing.
Well, we may have, but we didn't get back into that other session like the regular session.
Oh, on the Zoom, oh, okay.
So that was my fault and we didn't talk about anything else for those.
I was gonna say, I know I made a motion here, but we didn't do it online, sorry.
We'll make sure that doesn't happen again. But do we have any other discussion or all those in favor? Any vote? Do you know? Do you have this? Oh, we have an extension from John. Okay. John is the only extension? All right. Adjustments to the agenda?
We do have an additional personnel nomination tonight and an announcement of a transfer. And you did receive an adjustment to the agenda. You should have that in your folder tonight.
That just brings it to my report and all I have to say quickly, as we have a lot of business to do tonight, is that we're all here gathered here tonight anxious to see what the school plan will be. I just want everybody to keep in mind as we, as board members deliberate and as the public comments that we're all in this together. None of us have thought a year ago that we'd even be considering talking about reopening the school. It's just something that we've done for hundreds of years, it's gone to school and fall. So just please remember as we do that, that whether you agree with the plan or not, it's nothing that any of us think is better than what we had before. We all are in the same boat. We all have different circumstances at home and it's gonna affect us all differently, but it will affect us all. And so hopefully as we deliberate, we'll keep that in mind. And that'll take us to Regent's panel.
Okay. What I'd like to do right now is go ahead and go ahead and announce the nominations that we have this evening. So our first nomination is Julia Basano as a half-time Spanish teacher at Reeds Brook. Julia has a BA in Spanish with a minor in education from the University of Maine and is expected on December to complete her master's degree in Spanish. And we are recommending her at a half-time salary of $18,286.07.
So moved.
Second.
Will her salary be adjusted once she attains her masters or how's that work?
So by contract, there's a timeline for when the master's has to be completed and then there would be an adjustment depending on that condition.
All right, any just, oh, we have to have them, do we get a motion? Can we repeat that for? So moved. John, John moved, Jane has seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, welcome aboard.
Welcome Julia.
Welcome Julia.
I guess I'm gonna move that.
Thank you, Tony. I'm sorry, Lori, I will specify on which John.
Okay, our next nomination is Kristen Leitheiser as a new position for us as bar coordinator half-time at Hampden Academy. You may recall that bar, building assets, reducing risks, is a new program we're bringing in to support our freshman class and Kristen will help to be a facilitator and coordinator of that program. Kristen, of course, is a longtime retired now teacher from Hampden Academy in English and we're recommending her coming onboard at a half-time salary of $34,132.45.
So moved, second. So John Holmes is moved and Lester is seconded. Discussion? All those in favor? All right, welcome back.
Okay, in your folders, you should also see there is the adjustment to the agenda and that is for a nomination for Andrew Barnes as a full-time Spanish teacher at Reeds Brook Middle School. Mr. Barnes has several years of experience in several different environments and schools and I spoke with him today about his teaching in the past in both French and Spanish. And so it is my pleasure to recommend Andrew Barnes to us at a salary of $54,761.52.
So moved.
Second.
John Holmes is moved and Jane is seconded. Discussion? All those in favor? Oh, sorry, John.
Briefly, I've known Andrew for over 45 years and I think he's an excellent teacher, but I am abstaining because he is my wife's nephew.
Okay, so noted. All those in favor? All right, and we have John, of course, who's abstaining.
Thank you. And then the further adjustment to the agenda tonight is that I will announce the transfer of special education teacher Andrea Bazino from Wyler Middle School to Hampden Academy. She will also serve in special education here at the academy.
Any like?
Yes. Okay, at this time, we'd like to ask Rob to read the essential behaviors and outcomes proclamation.
This is how we see the owl really works. Education enables all students to learn the skills, acquire the knowledge, and develop the attitudes necessary for them to reach their potential as citizens who can meet the challenges of a changing global society. We believe that all citizens in our communities share the responsibility to educate our children and themselves, that our schools are community support systems, and should welcome and encourage all members of our communities to participate. And our schools will have a supportive and empowering atmosphere for all students and community members.
Thank you all. So at this time tonight, we have made the decision to move public comment to the period after this presentation on reopening schools. Our reason for doing that is that we hope that our presentation will help to give answers that people might be seeking tonight and also present information that people may want to comment about. So we look forward to our community participation after this presentation. I'd like to echo sentiments that Keith had earlier tonight and that sentiment is that we are all good people up against really tough choices. And I think sometimes what's important is to reflect on the value systems that we have and how those value systems, when they run deep, it allows us to really debate what is important for our students and what will make the most common sense as we move back into an environment where safety is paramount. So as we're moving through tonight, I know that emotions run deep when it comes to our children and that's the way it should be. We're the strongest advocates for students as parents and educators and I know that the presentation we're about to make to you reflects so much care and concern from all facets of our school district and our community. So I'd like to say thank you to all who participated. And in talking about that aspect of this plan development, I can't say enough about the participation of our staff members, the community, we've had partners and parents coming onboard to help us and all of those perspectives have led to a much better plan. There's no doubt about that. So I'd like to just let you know a few groups that I would like to recognize tonight. Certainly our four committees that were in the district that had a number of staff members who came in the summer to do this important work, so a tribute to all of them. I would also like to say that our administrative council and EA22 have been extremely important partners to us in making decisions and evaluating how we move forward for many different facets of the plan and we continue to talk on a weekly basis, so important. But then there are community partners around childcare, CEBUS. We also have been sure to talk to our towns, so town manager of Newburgh, Cindy Grant, has been a partner with me side by side to make some big decisions and I appreciate all of that as I know you do from the board angle as well. So thank you to all. I'm gonna go ahead and present the plan on our screen. And for those of us who are new to this meeting tonight, when we do a screen share, I cannot see the comments, so other people will be letting me know if there is something that needs to be discussed or paused so we can have time for it. And please interrupt as we're moving along so that you get your needs met as board members. Christine, anything you'd like to share before we start?
Go ahead.
Okay, so this is a draft plan. We certainly respect that you will be making a critical decision tonight around approval. So at this moment, we are presenting a conceptual proposal to you and it is to get our school year underway. We are hopeful for the students to be returning to school as early as September 1st.
Can you clarify, will you be taking comments from the public throughout the presentation? Because you had referenced the chat box, I just want to make sure expectations are set for the public in that regard.
Okay, we'll be taking public comments when we conclude the presentation and if we need to pause, I would like to have the school board members have an opportunity to do so at critical moments in the presentation. So RSU22 is committed to the optimal learning of all students and this has been a mantra for us for years now and we wanted to make sure it was front and center of our decision making. This does mean that we have a plan that has held the health and safety of students first and foremost. We absolutely had a lens of equitable access for all students in this plan. We learned a lot from our March to June remote learning and wanted to make sure that those lessons were heated when we made a greater plan. And then we knew flexibility was paramount because we know everything is evolving. Every week, there's a new decision, information, research available. When it comes to equity, it's very important to understand that equality does not equal equity. Making sure that everyone has equal has a result that this graphic demonstrates. We want to be sure that equity is the result that we have in our district, so there are places, times, and students who need different or more and we want to be sure that that is happening through our plan. And we've heard from parents at our forums that there were situations, internet access is a perfect example. We don't all have equality in how we can access remote learning, so we need to be sure that we have the equity lens to ensure it. Transparency was another critical factor for us, so as you know, our four steering committees were sure to be putting out communication to our staff and to our school board along the way. We've attempted to work with our public as well to be sure that information has been getting out to the public as we felt we could and then also surveying to get information in return. So our four steering committees, once again, operations, all about the logistics, the health and safety, the trainings we would need, instruction, what will be our instructional model that you'll hear about tonight, resources, really thinking about what we need and how we're actually going to fund that or secure it, and then communication, I think that you've all experienced our communication up to now, we've been trying to make sure people are well-versed in what has been going on and what decisions would be made.
Will these steering committees continue through the school year?
So for now, we have continued with our steering committees. We are really going phase by phase, so we haven't committed to full school year, but I will say people earnestly are willing to continue in the time that they have to give. So that's good news and I can see continuation. So I spoke earlier about the solicitation of information and using research. We are scouring different, certainly internet sites that we feel are well-vetted, we're listening to expert sites, CDC, Maine DOE, American Association of Pediatrics, we're looking at a lot of instructional expertise and making sure it generates good conversation. We also started a group email so that anyone could email our committee's questions or perspectives so the whole committee would regard it and be able to be aware. Once again, our lens for decision-making, we understood that in order to have students come back to our buildings at all, which was very apparent in our first parent survey, you'll remember, right? Eighty percent of our families were saying, we want students back in school, so health and safety had to be first. We wanted to make sure that equity lens was number two because internet access as an example was a real challenge for us in remote learning. In-person instruction, we know is valuable. We have experts hired to do that work with students and we wanted it to be part of our plan. And then we knew that cohorting of students has been found to be an effective way to mitigate spread and exposures, so we wanted to incorporate that practice. And then the plan had to be realistic, doable and sustainable over time. So our planning cycle works this way. We've engaged in research and development through our committee process and I would say to you that we have been helped along the way by outside experts, certainly have sought the expertise of Northern Light, we have talked to providers, social workers, for instance, we've talked to people at the university levels who are thinking about remote learning in those environments and brought in that expertise to our committees. The plan development, we absolutely use the committee structure to do the lion's share of that work and then we've sought public input from all of the questions and surveys and we're here tonight for consideration. Yes, Laura?
Yeah, apparently the YouTube feed is not giving the presentation.
I'm taking care of it. I'll get a link to going, but.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sorry about that.
Okay, the operations committee was responsible for evaluating the logistics that would get us back into the school building, so we're starting here because that's health and safety and that's our first priority, of course. So in order for students to come safely back to school, which we are proposing in our hybrid model, symptom screening at home will be the practice. We have a formalized form that parents will receive and so that they can monitor each of the symptoms on the list and daily make a decision with each of their children if there is an appropriateness for the child to go to school or if there is any exhibition of symptoms that would require the student to stay home. We're going to ask that these self-checks be done by parents before a student boards a school bus or before they enter a school building each day. We will make sure that information is provided to the families in order to do the checks and if you do have a child with the symptoms on the list, we ask that they not be present in school and we certainly would hope that the student would be seeking a provider if necessary. We're going to make sure that symptoms and then the absences will have clear direction to families and guidance so people know how to make those decisions.
I don't know if this is the appropriate time to ask that. Are you gonna be developing that a little more later?
That's the next slide. There we go, right there. Okay. So these are the categories where we would have the self-checks completed and these boxes are important for us to go through with each child and if they have any of the following symptoms, we would ask that the student not be coming to school that day and the parent can make the decision around whether a provider should be sought or not. You can see the list is certainly extensive and when you look at some of the options there, there could be other reasons than COVID for those symptoms to present. So you know your child best as a parent and it will be important that you make those calls as a parent.
I heard a text from a parent watching YouTube that wondered if the YouTube feed could be pointed at the screen so that we can see the content. Right now, it's pointed at your site profile.
Okay. Can I be able to get it going? Can we move the camera to look at the slideshow on the screen?
We won't be able to pick up your audio as well.
I just want them to know that I might impact audio so they could keep you posted. That's the next slide. There we go, right there. Okay. So these are the categories where we would have the self-checks completed, and these boxes are important for us to go through with each child. And if they have any of the following symptoms, we would ask that the student not be coming to school that day, and the parent can make the decision around whether a provider should be sought or not. You can see the list is certainly extensive, and when you look at some of the options there, there could be other reasons than COVID for those symptoms to present. So you know your child best as a parent, and it will be important that you make those calls as a parent.
I heard a text from a parent watching YouTube that wondered if the YouTube feed could be pointed at the screen, so that we can see the content. Right now, it's pointed at your site profile.
Okay. Can I be able to get it going? Can we move the camera to look at the slideshow on the screen?
We won't be able to pick up your audio as well.
I just want them to know that I might impact audio, so they could keep you posted. No doubt. Okay, thank you. I'll move on to this, and thanks for getting me picked up. These are contact questions, and the contact questions are important for us to evaluate for students as well. These will also be reviewed by staff. So although we're going to have the list for students' self-checks, staff members will be doing the same type of practice in our district along with these contact questions. The contact questions list around travel or exposure to others goes beyond yourself. Physical distancing in the facilities is a critical part of the CDC and Maine DOE guidance and requirements. Physical distancing in our facilities is the primary reason why we are suggesting a hybrid model. So as we move through this presentation, I just would like to point this out to everyone. It is an operations concern and issue to be able to make the six-foot distancing between adults and between adults and students. And then we are moving in the direction of three-feet distancing between students at a minimum. There are many places in our buildings where we will be increasing that distance between students, but we are going to be using that latitude as we need to. When any children or staff are eating, it is going to be required that there will be six feet of physical distancing, because your mask is removed in order to eat. And we also will have students facing in the same direction, facing forward, so there isn't cross exposure of aerosol or droplets. We will be having a medical isolation room in every building, and that will be designated for students and staff who may present symptoms during the school day. Ventilation will be, of course, required, and we have been studying our ventilation systems in every building, and we are absolutely going to be making decisions around, for instance, fans, the use of windows in our K-8 facilities. Camden Academy has the HEPA filtration system, which is going to be very well-suited to help us with this situation with COVID. We also are going to be opening damper systems in our K-8 buildings to increase the airflow, and we're doing a purge at night, so we have 100% air exchange while the building is unoccupied. Groups in any area of the school cannot exceed the indoor group size limits, which right now is 50. And so any space that you see set up in a building will have 50 or less people in it. Masks and face coverings will be required. And I'd like to spend a little time here, just to let folks know, that students ages five and above will be required to wear masks in school, and the face covering must cover their nose and mouth. There also is an expectation that students in pre-K who may be four-years-old will wear masks in RSU 22, but the degree to which they will wear the mask does not have to be as stringent as those who are five and older. We'll be developmentally appropriate about that expectation, but it will be expected that we are training the students around mask-wearing, and that part of their day will be spent with masks. We understand the management of four-year-olds and masks will be something new for everyone. If a student rides a bus, a mask needs to be worn for the entire bus ride. And face shields are an alternative for students who have medical or behavioral challenges that require that they have alternatives to masks. We need to be aware that there are staff members who will also potentially have medical accommodation needs that might require that they have an alternative as well. Face shields alone are not considered to be an appropriate face covering, because it does not cover your nose and mouth with a closed bottom to be face covering. We will be teaching hand hygiene significantly, and making sure that our students and staff are practicing this. We will be having videos that will be coming out around this practice, and teachers will emphasize it. We will have places, especially in elementary school, where handwashing will be easily accessible right in the classroom. Older students will be expected to use hand sanitizer more regularly and access the restroom for handwashing as they require. There are a number of times where handwashing will be expected or hand sanitizing, and you can see the list there of all the different possibilities of when we'll be expecting that. Our intention is to teach routine. So just as you might come in and say your name for attendance in a classroom, you will also be washing your hands or sanitizing. Okay, personal protective equipment, otherwise known as PPE. As an employer, we are expected to be executing the use of PPE appropriately. We have safety precautions for our nursing staff that are different than typical in our buildings, and we will be sure that our nurses or any staff that may be in special education settings that need to get close to a student or need to be around a student without a mask are wearing additional PPE for safety. We will be providing the PPE for our employees for whatever capacity they need to wear. We also know that we have classrooms or areas that may become zones that have been exposed to COVID, and in that case, we will be following the protocols for closure and disinfecting of those spaces, and we'll be contacting the CDC for further guidance around how we should move forward with any type of recommendation for closure or sending students home.
Well, I do have a question here, if it's okay. So a child comes to school, he presents with some symptoms, and a nurse puts him in isolation and sends him home. You mentioned that it's up to the parent about whether they see a physician or not, based on that. And let's just assume a parent decides that this is serious enough, and I want to get my child tested for COVID. And my concern at this point is the lag time. Depending on what lab the parent or the medical provider uses, it can take up to 10 to 14 days to get those results back. So we have a child who's been sick in school with his cohort and his teacher, and we won't know for a good while what actually is going on with that student. It could be a cold, it could be the regular flu. That can be diagnosed within 15 minutes if they go to a medical provider. So my concern is what's happening in that environment in which this child was participating in that interim period. So you mentioned the word presumptive in one of your sections. So I was wondering if it's not to the benefit of everyone to assume that if a child is presenting sick at school, he will be presumptive, that we will assume until we know otherwise that he is infectious, or she.
That's great. So we'll let Brittany Lehman come on to speak to us about that. Brittany Lehman is our wellness coordinator in the district.
Hi, thank you. I am the wellness coordinator, and I'm also one of the school nurses. So what we are going to function under, and I, Mary and I, understand all of those concerns, most definitely. Working with the providers in the area, we are hoping that they'll have quick turnaround, but if you use an agency like Urgent Care or Convene MD, they do send out-of-state. So when I'm going to work with a parent, I am going to recommend that these are the institutions that do either in-house testing or send to the main CDC. That's one thing. And then we will work with the provider that that child sees, and if that provider tells me that the student is a presumptive positive, I will work off of that. I am not going to have us make that decision as nursing staff. We cannot diagnose, but we can recommend and then work with the area experts. If the student, if we are told by a provider or the CDC that a student is presumptive positive, we will then implement our protocols around closing and quarantining students. Unfortunately, you know, we need to work with what the data gives us, because kids are kids. And if you look at that symptom list, you know, I was sick for five years when my kids started school, and many of those symptoms are COVID, they look like COVID. So we need to work with our area providers. It'll be a lot of communication to be able to make that happen. But again, I understand your concerns, but I'm going to work with the data when it's given to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next slide is additional information, and we can just kind of continue with that. But we had a lot of questions come through the board Facebook page, and they were very detailed, and we did our best to address them, and the question-and-answer session we're not done. We have hours in it, and we'll keep continuing to update it as soon as we can. But this level of detail, we wanted to improve now, just because it does address a lot of those questions that were presented to us earlier. So related to presumptive positive cases, RSU 22 will follow the quarantining and isolating guidance that Brittany just reviewed with us, and that is aligned with our CDC expectations. Students must be checked in our health offices at each of our schools if they are returning from an illness experience, and we're going to make sure that we are having that conversation and going through the check as well before child returns. Students who arrive at school with a temperature greater than 100 and have taken fever-reducing medications like Tylenol or Ibuprofen will not be given access to the classroom, and the parents will be notified to pick the child up, because of course, with that type of treatment, we are unclear how high the fever would have been. When the child returns to school, the child needs to be well enough to participate in the activities, and if there is a restriction, we are going to be asking that a note from a child's healthcare provider come along with the student, so that we can have the professional advice around how the student should participate or not in any activity. The physical distancing, I think this is just another layer of the information that we've seen before, but I do want to talk about the fact that this physical distancing with school facilities is one layer, and our wellness coordinator, Brittany, who you just heard from, has used a wonderful analogy of putting layers of Swiss cheese on a sandwich. As you lay down each layer, you're hopeful that the holes are covered by the next piece, right? And so social distancing is one layer. Then we have the layer where we are having our masking up. Then we're having the layer where we are asking students to have the hand hygiene. Then we have the layer of asking students to face forward and stay that way. It's going to be a lesson in just education and then finding out how we can be together reasonably. I'm very concerned that people may think the environment would be sterile. I've been wearing a mask now and grouping up with people in a socially-distanced fashion for more than a month, and I can tell you that we've gotten used to doing that, and you can still feel the camaraderie in the group. It isn't necessarily a sterile environment. So though these may sound that way, I think that I'm optimistic, and kids are very resilient. But the last bullet is very important that I want to emphasize. When I talk about community partners coming out to help us, we contract with Honeywell Services around our ventilation and HVAC systems, and they have come in to guide us and to talk to us about mitigation strategy, and they are absolutely happy for us that we have the system that we do at Camden Academy with a HEPA filtration. They understood that we had real questions around our systems and wanted to know exactly what we should be doing to increase the likelihood that our systems were working well for air ventilation. So they've made some adjustments for us already around the venting and so forth. We will be buying a box fan for every K-8 classroom, so that they can use that as they see fit and need to move air, and we'll be making sure that the purges are happening throughout K-8 schools every night. We also will have filtration checks more routinely than we usually do in a typical school year. So I just wanted you to be aware of those efforts. Mask and face coverings. What I would like to talk about here is, we all understand what needs to be worn and how students need to come to school. In the Q and A's that Tina was referencing, it's very clear that people have questions about how we will be enforcing this at a school. What I can tell you, after years and thousands of students, students are amazingly compliant, want to do the right thing, and when they have a lapse in judgment or a lapse in following rules, we educate them about it, and generally, they come right back on board. So I feel very optimistic that our staff is talented in how we work with students, and my hope is that this doesn't get into a discipline territory typically, as an educational one. Will there be a time where we may have to have a disciplinary moment around a mask? I bet, we're a school. But I think we'll be successful with that. We are going to be limiting traffic into our schools, so even if parents or visitors are masked, we're not going to be inviting them into the school. And are we hopeful that in the future, we will be able to see how our systems work and consider how that can happen? Yes, but at this time, we're going to be sure it's limited to staff and students. Hand hygiene, we'll certainly be doing the training, and hand sanitizer is being distributed throughout our buildings. We'll also have hand sanitizer stations outside of our buildings, so as students exit cars or get off the bus, they can access it before they even come in. Returning from out-of-state travel. Right now, in the state of Maine, there is an expectation that if you return to the state of Maine, or you are traveling as a tourist coming into Maine, you have a 14-day quarantine upon arrival, and that you also have an option for test in the situation. We'd like people to be aware of this, because in August, if you're choosing to depart the states and are planning to return, please read this guidance carefully. There are certain states, New Hampshire, Vermont, Connecticut, New Jersey, and New York, that are allowable states where you do not have to quarantine, but all others, Massachusetts is one I'd like to point out, is not on the split. So please be sure that people are attentive to this, so that their students are not in a situation where we're questioning if they need to have a quarantine period before turning to school. Any questions on that?
If a child has to be quarantined for 14 days or has to stay home on an onsite day because of the screening, is the teacher going to be reaching out to that child to make sure they stay caught up with the cohort? Or as a parent, I just see parents being concerned that they will fall behind if they're not able to go onsite.
So we're hopeful that we're more proactive in communicating and preventing this situation, but we know that it will happen. And with the flipped classroom that we will get to later in the presentation, we will explain how the model allows us to present content information remotely. And so then, if they're quarantining, the elements that they're missing are those, the high-end conversations and the deep thinking, and that's what the flex day is for, because that gives us an opportunity to check in with a child that might otherwise fall behind. Great, thank you. Transportation. Oh, I'm sorry.
One clarifying question. I'm probably going to hate this question, but if you go to Connecticut, must you go around Massachusetts to get there?
I'm not an expert at how we monitor travel, but I would...
Just for the record.
If you remained in your car and you got through Massachusetts, you'd be okay.
Okay, good. I'm glad to hear that.
Well, although I'm not a travel agent, so I feel a little guilty saying... Transportation. So once again, I mentioned CRBUS has been a partner to us throughout this. We are encouraging families to transport children and to consider carpooling options with students that might be in the... that might be in the same cohort, for example. We have had many parents indicate on the prior survey that they would be able to facilitate this, so we're appreciative of that. All students who are riding the school bus will be required to wear a mask. We will have a situation of limits of student numbers on the bus. And so if we can get our numbers down, we are likely to facilitate the number of runs or similar to that we've had in the past, which would allow us to have school start times be quite similar to what's been in the past. If we do indeed end up with additional bus runs that need to get on the road, then we will be looking at staggered start times because students will be coming in and departing school differently than they have in the past. I'm sure that we will find a way to get in that rhythm, but initially, it will take some getting used to. If you are a parent who's planning to drop your child off or pick your child up at school, we will be devising campus-specific drop-off and pickup plans. And those will be advertised before school starts so that you understand the pathway of how things will be followed and flow, and we'll give specific directions.
That'll be interesting.
Yes.
Because we see how well it works, just say, in Rees-Brook on a normal day.
The interesting news I do have is that we are investigating moving the bus garage. So we are actively working right now to consider alternative sites so that we would have a greater parent-drop-off parking area and flow at the Wetherbeam Agrocampus. We're not there yet, but that's it close. Technology. We need to make sure that we have a couple of critical components in students' hands. One, key device for remote learning, and the other being access to the internet. So I have to say that Nate is here with us tonight. We are working overtime, and Nate is certainly the head of doing that to make sure that we have adequate devices for students to access if they need that at home. And then, secondly, making sure that internet access is not a barrier wherever we can solve it. There are a few places in our attendance area where even if we give a hotspot, it just isn't working well. So we're going to be thinking about how we can use the onsite school days for students to download material before they leave the school building and go home with it already prepared or take home a pen drive that's already preloaded so that they're not facing the stress of no access. So people are putting their minds to this, and we're hopeful that we'll be closer to success than we were in the remote learning days of March 2.
Question on that. With Google Classroom, which is somewhat interactive online, will there be a way, or is there a way, that it can work sort of as a bar on license offline and then come back? Or how does that work? Because that's pretty integral to what we're doing.
I'm going to defer the expert.
I'm not sure I understand the question.
So with Google Classroom, as you're going down through the to-do list, et cetera, that's all basically your login online. If you don't have the ability to log into that at home or to submit, are you able to do that offline? Or bring it in the next day and submit? You'd have to do it at school, I assume.
That's right. You'd have to get that material where you have access to the internet, right?
We should test that because some of those are really interactive in the classroom. And I just don't know how that workflow would work based on what we witnessed earlier in the spring. It just seems like it really relied heavily on online access, so.
I would think, though, that if a teacher knew a student was having an issue, that they would have that opportunity to talk to the student ahead of time. You know, here's the materials I'm going to be using for remote. Why don't you go ahead and put them on this thumb drive or access them offline before you get home? That's being proactive, I think. But that conversation does need to happen.
Thank you.
So do teachers have a pretty good sense about students that may have that difficulty so that we are proactive and not trying to catch up once school starts?
They will. So we're going to be doing another survey tonight. And once we get that survey launched, it will have a question about that. And we'll be seeking people to let us know. We need you to call us because we need some help here.
But people who don't have access aren't going to see that survey.
This will also be part of our technology PD that we had the first week back, having these real conversations with teachers so that they can be prepared to have those conversations with their students in their classes.
We're also going to sift through the data. So any family that does not respond, we're going to track down the information. So we do have our wireless networks available at each of the schools, and we can have the access sought by students by coming to those locations. And our libraries and our communities will be advertised as places that people could go if they need to get the wifi. So in a flexible learning plan, we do have the red, yellow, and green status that is being measured and issued every two weeks. This is based on the U.S. CDC considerations for school. We have the red categorization. If a state, well, our state goes red, that means that our county would not be eligible for in-person instruction, and we would need to be moving to a remote, fully remote situation. A stay-at-home order would likely be in place in the red zone, and we would offer full remote learning. Our full remote learning, if we end up in a red situation and four parents and families that are picking full remote, we will have live instruction that will occur online, and it will be synchronous. So we would be inviting students to a meeting of a class all at once. Everyone would need to show up and attend. And then we would also have asynchronous opportunity where the students could attend at the time issued.
I have a question about on the off days, on the remote days. How much, how much time will students actually be interacting remotely with a teacher on a given day?
They won't.
There's no.
If you're in the hybrid model and you are having a remote day, Tina will talk to this in a little bit later in the presentation. But if you are 100% remote, then we would be having live teaching. So we'll get into that. In our learning plans, we are going to be using certain platforms. And one thing we heard from the parent forums is, can you please streamline so we're not having to learn so many platforms all at once? And so we have made a decision that grade 8 through grade 2 will use Seesaw as their primary learning management system or platform. Google Classroom will be used grades 3 through 12. The schoolwork will be assigned and turned in by the students through that platform. And we will be teaching students how to do that. We'll also be teaching teachers who need to have some learning around that because they're new to our system or they'd like to know more. They're going to learn from our expert teachers who have that down. We are going to try to minimize the passwords and the login so that people can manage that. And there would be daily live digital contact in a red zone. The yellow zone, that is an elevated risk of COVID spread. And this is where we would need to reduce the number of people. RSG 22 will be going back in a model that looks like yellow, but it's not because of the COVID spread, simply for us meeting the requirements of the DEE for physical distancing. So 50 to 60% of the students will be able to attend our schools at a time. And there will be a blend of in-person or distance learning. There will be two separate cohorts of students who attend. Cohort A will come to campuses for face-to-face instruction Monday and Thursday. Cohort B will attend on Tuesday and Friday. Wednesday is the flex day, and all students will participate in remote learning. It will be defined differently from school to school and child to child because we have different developmental levels. We have different needs and differentiation expectations. But we want to make sure the program is equitable, so we certainly worked on that. We'll have live remote instruction and check-ins going on so that students are having that contact. And then we may have live interventions for students depending on their needs. And those will happen on the Wednesday. Students would be participating in a flipped classroom model, and Tina will talk more about that. And content will be delivered remotely in an engaging and developmentally appropriate manner. High-yield strategies will be essential in this model, and Tina will speak to that. The days that were onsite are going to look different than it used to. And that's because we're prioritizing the engagement that is most appropriate. We are going to prioritize that siblings attend school on the same days. We want to make it reasonable for households to manage. And we understand that older siblings divide day to day. So we want to make sure that is done. And the survey that will go out later tonight will make sure that parents are indicating which siblings should be attending together. If there is an extreme situation after the district does assign a cohort to the family, we are going to have principals contacted if you would like to be considered for an alternative assignment. We certainly can't guarantee that we can change the days that you're assigned, but we will start lists, so we'll try to adjust. And then there may be times where we need to have synchronous remote instruction, which just simply means we ask students to show up on a remote day in the same way at the same time.
So in the, in the questions that we've been receiving, parents want details and information, as they should, about how we're going to meet IET and 504 requirements. So this slide speaks to that because those are the documents that guide an individual child's learning needs. So we don't want to say in a blanket document that there will always be asynchronous development on the flex day because there might be, as such a circumstance, those two I just named would be perfect examples of that, where a child might receive remote live speech therapy because with a mask on, it's hard to do a speech lesson a lot of times, especially if you're doing articulation and you're trying to model things. So the appropriate, or the best way to be able to deliver that, if that's your goal, might be remote. And so it might be that they're joining through Google meets with a couple of other kids with the same goal. The same thing could be said for 504s. If we're making accommodations around students' learning needs, then we need to remember that there will always be special circumstances that don't fit the larger plan because we have to meet the individual learning needs of children. And that did come up in questions, and I can't remember if we added it to the Q and A yet, so I wanted to make sure that we explained it here tonight.
So at this time, we're moving into green. And I'd like to acknowledge that the entire state of Maine has been coded green. And I would say to you that, from what I've experienced, initially, there was some feeling that green meant you get to go to school almost like we used to. And green does not mean go. Green is that first layer of decision-making. Green gives you the ability to make a decision to go back to school and to evaluate how well you can meet the other levels of requirements. And if you can do that, for instance, there are many small schools in Maine. And there are several of those small schools that can socially distance within their buildings to an adequate level where they are taking their full population back. RSG 22 is not in that situation. We have, thankfully, full schools. But in this case, it has caused us to have to evaluate how to use our space. And we are being creative with space. We have turned some different areas in our schools into usable areas that we haven't done before. So we are in a situation, though, where, although we're green for COVID spread, the physical distancing requirement remains, and that is why we are proposing the hybrid model to you. Would you like to talk more about the...
So what does the hybrid model look like? And what are we proposing for RSG 22? We're proposing the cohorts that Regan already mentioned for safety reasons. But within those cohorts, how do we teach kids in a way that we're really going to reach and teach them like we would if they were sitting right in front of us? And the proposal that we'd like you to consider for instruction is that of a flipped classroom. In a traditional classroom, you might have the content delivered through a lecture or a presentation. The teacher's giving the information while you're sitting right there. Then you take that information home and do something with it. And in a flipped classroom, you do just the opposite. You get the information at home through an instructional video that maybe the teacher makes. Maybe another third-grade teacher on your team makes it and shares it with you, and you make a different one for a different content area. Teachers are sharing resources. They're procuring them from the internet. They're using software that we have purchased, learning platforms such as iXL. Khan Academy is free but has great instructional videos. So when they find a match for their learning standards, they're going to choose what best delivers the instruction for the developmental needs of that group. And then the student will receive the content at home. And let's say I watch a Khan Academy video and I have to answer three questions. And I bring those back, and then I engage with the teacher and my classmates around that content. So we're really looking to use Hattie's high-yield strategies when we are face-to-face because the research tells us that's where the highest learning happens. So if we have kids face-to-face a shorter amount of time, we really have to prioritize those high-yield strategies to make the most of that time. Additionally, you got feedback in June around parents feeling the pressure to be the teachers. And in this model, if they're receiving content and the work is done in the classroom, that alleviates some of that pressure. That is not to say that they would never have to take notes while they watch a video or practice their math facts or do a word sort or write an essay. Work is still a fun, but only in conjunction with the content delivery. So it's not like they have to do two classes at home and then two at school. It's that we're prioritizing the small-group instruction and the questioning and debating when you have peers to do that with because collaborative learning is one of those high-yield strategies. That's why the technology piece is so important, and we've invested energy in figuring out how to make sure every child has access to that. And if they can't watch it online, how do we deliver that to them? It could be something as simple as read two chapters, do an outline. And when you get back, we're going to use the notes to debate in class because that's a high-yield strategy. So we're trying to take the pressure off parents, still use best practice, and teach students to be independent in their learning while they're at home. So we're going to ease into this very slowly. Please know that the remote part does not have to be perfect on day one in a flipped classroom. We're asking teachers to not put that pressure on themselves for perfection. They're going to work towards it, obviously. But they might teach, especially at the younger grades, one content area to be added to remote at a time. We're going to make it manageable, and we're going to make it sustainable because we want to do it well. We want to be very successful in this endeavor. Flipped classrooms have good success if they are done well. And the instruction committee's done a lot of research to be able to provide resources and professional development for our first week back. But it can't be a one-and-done. So some of that time Wednesdays, not on a regular basis, but as teachers share that they need support, we'll be able to provide that support around, really, it'll be targeted instruction for teachers and particularly around technology to give additional support in that way.
So that is a question I have. And I asked this of Regan a couple of weeks ago. But I'd just like to put it out there now. Do we have the capacity to collect data, evaluate that data, and adjust on the spot to correct for unforeseen problems?
So we do through formative assessment. I think that schools are so used to both high-stakes, status tests, that we come to rely on them. But guess what? Teachers are excellent practitioners. And so they are going to use, in educational jargon, formative assessment is just like taking the pulse of what they, where they are. And that way, you can reassess where they need to be. And so we do think that using those tools, we will be able to collect enough data to still monitor a child's progress to make sure that they're on track to meet their learning goals. We like the status tests as a hit now and then because they affirm that we're going in the right direction or they might flag for an intervention. But we are going to also rely on our internal assessment measures. Teacher observation, exit slips, the assessments that they do in class, portfolios and work samples. I had an example today of a high school teacher who was thinking about how they would use their portfolio from one quarter to another. So we have very innovative staff. And I'm almost excited about the hybrid model for that reason. I mean, obviously, we all want kids back with us all day, every day. Every teacher can say that. But if we can't have that, then how do we make the most of the situation that we have to live in? And so the hybrid model with a flipped classroom will be our first tool in our toolbox. We will have to constantly reassess. There were lots of questions about that. How often will this be reassessed? And Wednesday's team time with teachers will allow them to do that. And the four steering committees continuing to the extent that they're needed will also continue to do that. Because the first slide that Regan showed, or one of the first, was a circle, right? Because the first slide that Regan showed, or one of the first, was a circle, right? This is a cycle, and we are constantly going to have to use data to inform our next steps.
I just want to say, there's been quite a bit of feedback, questions around two days in a row. You know, obviously, that's a convenience and something families would seek, but with a flipped classroom approach, it makes perfect sense why we would want that three-day space rather than a five-day between. I don't know if you want to elaborate on that at all.
I'm glad you brought that up. Yes, thank you, we do. We can keep kids safe every single night with the sanit... We can do our best to keep kids safe every single night with the sanitizing, and therefore, to have one different cohort after another because of the resources that we can commit to sanitizing every night and to air purges, we can have a different cohort in Monday and then again Tuesday. But that, the days in remote, allow us to progress-monitor students, and then we don't have to go five full days without having eyes on a child and having that human contact with the child, because our feedback around the wellness and social-emotional support are that that spaced frequency would serve students well.
Thank you for asking.
There's been a request, when you're not speaking, if whoever does speak, if they could announce their name for those that are listening on audio and not video.
Okay, yes.
That'd be great.
So because this model of Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday met the safety threshold, and because UTC is a big key player here, we have a lot of students that attend UTC, and we wanted to make sure that we offered every opportunity for them to still participate... Sorry, Christine Boone speaking. That we've worked in, and I'm sure that Bill can speak to this later if you have further questions about it, but he's put a lot of time and effort and energy in collaborating with the director at UTC, and we do feel like the students' needs will be met at our high school if they want to participate in that program, very likely even in a cohorted manner, because there is another high school who's proposing the same model, and ideally, those students could be together on the day that they are there. So it had a host of benefits: learning, social-emotional, and safety.
So at this time, it's Regan Nichols, superintendent. I would like to ask, are there any principals online that would like to comment about the hybrid model or any of the UTC configuration that we're looking at?
Sorry, my microphone. This is Bill Tracy, principal at Handen Academy. I've been in communication with Greg Ward and Marty Gray for the event at UTC. We've also been in communication with the others sending principals to UTC, and they're really looking at a hybrid model as well that will serve all of our students. I am meeting with Greg again tomorrow, but the idea is they're not only going to group, kind of limit who within theirs, but they're also going to limit and group us by school. Rather than sending all students from every school every day, the idea is to try to balance that, so we're only going to mix into a few different school group cohorts while at UTC. It is still under development, but it's something that Greg and Marty and the staff there have been working very hard at.
Thank you, Bill.
Very collaborative efforts on the front, on that front. Impressive.
Okay, so I think that we've addressed a flipped classroom and how this process will work. We absolutely do intend for the Wednesday flex days to be very important days. When you are a teacher and you're going to be having students live in front of you four days a week, this Wednesday will give you the opportunity to turn your attention to the remote content that you need to be posting, so students on their remote days will have that enriched engagement. And we're very pleased that this type of a model will allow that, plus allow some time for intervention with students who might need that additional attention and differentiation. So we want to be sure that students who have IEPs in special education or 504 plans understand that those services will absolutely continue. There will be service provision that at times will be done on the onsite school day. And then there are other services we can provide remotely. I already know that we had success with some of that in our previous remote learning opportunities, but we've also learned some things about what we could be doing better. So we are looking forward to developing that program. Anything you'd want to add about that?
From school to school by grade span, principals have been collaborating to ensure equity across the district, so that if we taught art, music, P.E., all those specials, that we have the same frequency at the other elementary school, that it might not present exactly in the same way, right? Their schedules are not going to be exact, because they have different grade levels. They have different buildings. They have different needs. But they are going to make sure that within those decisions, they do have calibration and equity. So if they want to speak to an example around that, they're welcome to. I know they've been working hard. For example, on the Wednesdays, that might be different. Maybe a school counselor addresses a grade level with a live lesson. Maybe they assess that we're coming back, and we want to do the social and emotional wellness check-in, and that might happen at one school, because it needs to happen at that school or with a particular group. And so, again, we put out these guidelines, but with flexibility around meeting the needs of students.
So will we be nimble enough, should a school have to be closed because of a COVID outbreak, say, will we be able to smoothly transition immediately into, for that school and those students, remote learning?
That's one of the beauties of the plan that we're proposing. Sustainability is one of our lenses. So the hybrid model allows you to sustain, even if you have to make some shifts within a building around a particular cohort. But when it goes to the degree that you're speaking, we're going to use our onsite days to make sure we're preparing students for how a full-remote instructional platform might occur, so that they are ready to receive it. So I think it's going to take a lot of planning, and I love what Tina said, it's not a one-and-done. We're going to have to keep teaching and having teachers tell us what they need. But yes, we are very optimistic about that transition if it comes.
In the meeting today with the high school teacher, I was so impressed with the analogy of we're all first-year teachers together. She said that at this point. You remember how hard you worked as a beginning teacher and the learning curve that happened? And even though some new teachers started a different skill set, we have that right now within our technology base, our expertise in remote learning. But we still are, in some ways, all new teachers together.
I would like to bring attention to this slide that we have up right now. Should CDC guidelines change, RSG 22 will respond accordingly. We certainly might respond in the direction Mary Ann just brought up, which is where we go red. But we could also respond if we continue to be green and we have new requirement guidelines that come out about social distancing that allow us more latitude. We would love to be able to make adjustments to bring more children into the school. So I would like everyone to know that we will be constantly monitoring. As soon as possible, we would be working to make those transitions. We did talk about this, that green doesn't necessarily mean just go. We have to have all of the layers addressed, and our plan does do that. So in closing tonight, we'd like to say that we don't want to count the days of the school year. We want to make the days count, because we've learned that they are precious. We should not be taking them for granted, and that we have to make a difference for the students when we have them in front of us especially, and that remote days can be meaningful days too. Any final comments before we transition from this presentation and talk to the public about their...
I do have two questions that I think are important from the community's perspective. When will the supply list be posted online? And I forgot my other question, so I'm going to say that one while I think of what I was going to ask.
I have a couple of questions. Is the old high school and the elementary school in Newburgh, where are happening with those? How are those being leveraged?
So the old high school is being utilized right now by several different entities. Handen Recreation is one of those, and Journey Church, for instance. So we have actually helped to bring together Handen Rec. and Journey Church to talk about daycare provision. So Journey Church will be partnering with Handen Recreation, and I think more information will be coming out about that opportunity for full-day daycare. Our Newburgh school site, we have partnered Champions at that location, and they have gone and toured the site, and also will be pursuing a daycare option at Newburgh School for the five days of the week. And there's also another location that they are studying as well in Handen, that they will be letting us know very soon, if that will be moving forward as well. So we are aware that childcare needs are prevalent, and we wanted to help match make for that.
We are in fact finding with the church in Winterport, too, because we recognize that we're working toward the location that's closer to the needs of those two towns.
Can you talk about, well, to follow up with what I think your question might be, even if we had other buildings, can you talk about what some of the barriers would be if you use other facilities to spread out?
Yes, we absolutely did consider having alternative sites prepared so that we could spread our instructional programming out and bring more students back. And so, for instance, we thought about pursuing perhaps the Kiwanis Hall in Handen, having a grade level go there, or Newburgh School and sending special education programming or a grade level out. And after investigating those options, we recognized that we have so many itinerant services that are shared, and itinerant services are those that need to come into a classroom or program to support the students, that it was not feasible to have equity if we spread out that many grade levels and tried to find space across RSG 22 for all of the grade levels that would require it, plus all of the service providers that would be required: nurses, special ed staff, school nutrition staff, custodial staff. It wasn't something that we found was a feasible option. And then, just for clarification, so the physical distancing is the reason that the hybrid model is being amended tonight?
Yes.
Okay. And the distancing is a requirement from the Department of Education and Governor Mills, not a recommendation?
That is true.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Thank you. And the supply list. Last year, the board was sure to let us know that they would prefer that our school district was providing school supplies for our students. So we have discussed this at length, and we are continuing to support that expectation that you all have. So our schools are prepared to provide school supplies for our students. So we will be putting out some degree of list for parents who wish to pursue it, but what we're going to be asking parents to consider is setting up an at-home remote station with the school supply purchases rather than having those supplies come into the school. And then if parents would like to make donations to the school for school supplies, we're happy to receive those, and teachers would be clear around what it is they would prefer. But we recognize that there is this home instruction element, and we want to be sure that families are prepared for their own spaces first.
I remember the second question, because it was prompted by another question I read. Teacher assignments, when can parents expect to receive a communication about their child's teacher assignment?
Okay. That is going to be what I would call down to the wire this year. We're going to be putting out a survey, and we will be soliciting from every family once again, and we really need everyone to participate, what your choice would be now that you know the full plan. And once we have all of that information back, we will start to make class determinations. We will certainly be seeking to do that as efficiently as possible, so parents are aware of the teacher names. But we also have to make decisions about students who want full-remote, and so we'll be making teacher assignments around that aspect, too. So we have a few new avenues this year, and it will be later than typical to hear your teachers' names.
All right. So this brings us to the point in our agenda where we can have comments from the public. Like I said earlier, we would like to keep your comments to two minutes. For those of you that haven't commented for us before, the board will probably know it. Do you do any feedback when you're on your comments? That's just what we do with time. We've had a lot of great questions on the chat here tonight, so if those didn't get answered, it'd be great. Some of the administrators may need to answer those right now, but those will be added to our frequently asked questions list. If you will read, our policy does state that we would like to try to keep the preparedness to a minimum. So if somebody says the exact same thing, I know there's a lot of people that probably feel the exact same way, so just try to keep that in mind when you're speaking, though. I have a list of folks that have signed up through our Google form. Some folks have just had a question and have asked that they didn't want to speak. But in order to be fair, I don't know if you want to speak or you do not. So I will call you. I'll try to call two or three names so that we know who's going to be coming next. If you don't want to speak, please just say pass or put in the chat that you don't. But I am going to go through this list. It is quite lengthy. So we have first Kathy Rogers. Kathy, do you still wish to speak?
Due to the number, do we need to look at our time? What is the time restriction? Can you share that?
Yes, we would like to keep it under two minutes.
Two minutes.
Two minutes. Okay, we have Kathy Rogers, and I'm going to go with Christine T. Hill. Either one of you. Ashi Amode. Diana Hamel. And if we miss you and you do wish to speak, please put in the chat that we missed you, and we will come back to you. Deborah Harnish. Rhonda Parker. Tina Sutherland. Shelley Sargent. Krista Anderson. Martha Sarival? Probably just butchered that, but... And I have a Steven. I don't have a last name for Steven, but if you know that you want to ask your question, Steven will. Desiree Worcester. Joey Stevenson. Frank Cruz. Shannon Mar... Donnie? Marjorie Donnie? Tara Pelletier. Jeff Parsons. Rachel Parsons. Sherri Healy. Dana Jo Smith. June Whitney. Hannah Stockwell. Erin Lepierre. Got one?
Yeah, Shannon would like to speak. She could unmute.
Okay, go ahead, Shannon.
There was a comment also on YouTube that the chat is disabled for those that are not in Google, that they...
Yeah, I think they'll have to be in Google.
They have to be in Google?
I believe so.
The chat was disabled on YouTube on purpose.
Okay, so they will have to be in Google. Lester, just monitor that. Shannon, if you get unmuted or get on Google, let us know. Frank Cruz. Cherise Roberts. Jessica Leonard. Vanessa Archer. David Lilson. David Lilson. Stephanie Coffey. Lee Kreske. Arika Resivas. Sure that wasn't correct. Chris Linder. Kathleen Dormley. Great Littlejohn. Dara Roth. This is great because everybody must be having their questions answered, so.
Or they're not that fast on mute, but.
All right, who do we have?
Shannon.
Hi, this is Shannon Mark Donnie. I have, and my husband, we have a Reese Book middle schooler as well as someone in Weatherby and at McGraw. My question, and I may have missed it, but we were doing bedtime, so I apologize for that, but are we looking into the possibility of bringing in alternative sites or trailers or exploring spaces for if this needs to continue long-term or to possibly mitigate the length of time which we need to do a hybrid model?
So thank you for the question Shannon. We have looked at alternative sites and evaluated at the present time if we would want to move in that direction or not and have chosen not to for now. As far as your question about longer term, I think that we will be continually evaluating and if it looks like we are going to be facing this type of decision-making well into next spring, then we would start to decide on plans for how portable classrooms might be able to be brought in to the district, where those sites might be. We would want to be focused on our campus development for onsite alternatives because of all of the different services that would need to be present for the children to be well-supported.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, I may be mistaken, but I think I left off. Mackenzie D'Angelo. Amy West. Ai Takechi. Stephanie Coffey. Abigail Lent. Jessica Barnes.
Hello, this is Jessica Barnes. Can you hear me?
Yes, we've got you Jessica, go ahead.
Hi there. I have two children, one at Weatherby and one at McGraw. And I did post this question in the Q and A as well, but I'm still having a hard time wrapping my head around the cohorts being spread out as they are and not being on consecutive days. In the plan itself, it says that the schedules and protocols are adjusted to reduce the student movement in buildings and by spreading the cohorts out over days like that, you're actually spreading the spread of germs. And if you had the cohorts meeting consecutive days, you could use that Wednesday as a cleaning day, reset for the kids that are coming in on the Thursday, Friday cohorts. And it would be the safest option for our kids, for their families, and for your faculty and staff. Also cohort A is only going to get one day of in-person learning the first two weeks of school. For those that look at, that's really difficult to only see their teacher twice in those first two weeks of school. Another thing with that cohorting is if a student in cohort A tests positive and the teacher somehow contracts that, the teacher then potentially exposes the cohort B students who come in the next day. And then when you go to quarantine, you're essentially doubling the amount of people that may need to be quarantined. And so that's just food for thought. Another thing that came up, I think one of the school board members mentioned, teacher assignments, are those going to change? We've already received ours in the mail, so I'm not sure if that's something that's going to change because of the numbers. And I didn't hear anything about classroom capacity, how many kids are going to be, you know, what the maximum is for each school. And you did mention 504 and IEP plans, but there was no mention of any Chapter 104 services and what those might look like. So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. So I will speak to the cohorting. We do have confidence that our custodial staff and the efforts that we've made to have our custodial staff trained and to be sure that our protocols for sanitation that we've actually been using for quite some time are a good match for the COVID cleaning. And we do feel that we are able to move forward to have the cohorts be safe and come on consecutive days in the way that we've planned. We do have a protocol for nighttime cleaning so that it's full disinfection and we do believe that we aren't at risk for exposure anymore than if we were having students come the next day and have exposure in the school as well. We also prioritize that it is our mission to have the education be as structured and effective as possible and we know that that structure of having five days off of school is probably putting the learning at risk in a way that coming more frequently would help. So we have had to balance the two different aspects there to cohorting. As far as Chapter 104, you want to speak?
Chapter 104 is gifted education and we still have all those staff in place and they will be delivering programming in accordance with ILPs, which are individual learning plans. And those meetings will be held as normal, as regularly scheduled and a team decides the programming needs for a gifted child, just like an INP team decides the programming needs for a special education child. Chapter 104 actually falls under special education law and we do adhere to that and we'll make sure those programming needs are followed. And she wanted to know about, in the first two weeks, two days. There are 72 days that each cohort attends because we have Friday professional development and additional days, sometimes Wednesday, sometimes Tuesday, sometimes Thursday, that the equity comes into the cohort in total number of days.
Can you explain that better, Rita? Well, it is true that when you have young students coming to school, that the more that you can see them and establish routines, of course, that's an advantage. I think that we recognize that we're going to have to be working very hard to establish relationship and have our remote experiences for the younger students be very engaging so that we can keep them in that train in the first two to three weeks so that we can start that development well. But I do recognize your point around the missing of Mondays.
All right, thank you. Jennifer Kohvor. Stephanie Lebrun. Melissa Sigmund. Joy Walters. Let me, Lester, if I get somebody in the chat, trying to look at time too. Jennifer.
Oh, I got it right here. I was just looking.
Thank you. Rachel Pace. Travis Bryant. Amy Ryder. Eric Hardy. Denise Lilly. Shelby Lang. Samantha Fanjoy. Gretchen Teaser. Sarah Stansang. Jeanne Dunn. Peggy Brown. Rochelle Skilling. Deb Wisketow. Christie Shaw. Ty London. Dawn Bezwick. Deb Wisketow. Kara Maury. I have Deanna. I don't have a last name, but you may know who you are. Okay, thank you Deanna. What's that? Wiko? Wiko? Good, did I? No, didn't do that right. Wiko Frye, thank you. Elizabeth Tilkin. Krista Anderson. And Sadina McAvoy.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, go ahead Sadina.
Thank you. My name is Sadina McAvoy. On behalf of E822 and my COVID president, I want to thank you for this opportunity to address the board, the community. This has certainly been an eventful year and unfortunately it looks as though we will be continuing to make major adjustments in light of COVID-19 pandemic. We want to assure everyone that the teachers and staff at RSG 22 are supportive of the efforts being made to ensure all of our students receive fair and equitable access to education this fall. Many of our coworkers have dedicated multiple hours this summer working with administrators to reshape instruction and school operations necessitated by this pandemic. We believe the plan reported by Superintendent Nichols and Assistant Superintendent Boone was thoughtfully designed for the well-being of all and with the goal to continue delivering the education we the district expect. Through weekly virtual meetings and multiple emails, there has been considerable collaboration and consultation between administration and the association. The association has also surveyed its members several times this summer and have purposefully added their ideas, concerns, and wisdom to help shape the plan. That said, there are a few areas that under the circumstances we believe warrant further consideration as we move forward with the opening plans. One area we think deserves further examination is the employees' time process. We believe a more robust protocol is in order to ensure that employees do not risk running up sick time and their effort to adhere to the building plan and staying home and experiencing any of the COVID-19 symptoms. Second, the association proposes all employees who can work remotely do so in order to reduce the amount of contact in our buildings. We hope the community sees this as a genuine attempt to help with social distancing and reduce the potential exposure to this virus. We have demonstrated that thoughtful collaboration, teamwork, and student contact virtually. Believe us when we say we can't wait for the day we can all be back safely in the classrooms and on the campuses. Third, we extend an invitation to you to recognize the need for increased time to plan for, to prepare, and to implement this hybrid model as well as the remote learning components. We acknowledge that our traditional practices around teaching, tutoring, and running our vast complex buildings may have to look different. After all, good education practices are reflective and open to change. That said, we also hope you will recognize that the district may need to additionally compensate some employees when they're asked to go beyond their cultural requirements. One of the things that attracts people to working in schools, whether it's in classrooms, preparing meals, or maintaining the facilities, is the sense of community and cooperation. We may have our areas of expertise, but we know we're all in this together. With that in mind, we encourage you to scrutinize the plan and to ask the proper questions. Additionally, we want you to feel empowered to use this opportunity to not only help us get through the pandemic, but to think about how we can be leaders in helping our society deal with problems around equity, hunger, and childcare. One thing this crisis has clearly revealed is the role schools play in working for a strong and healthy community. In closing, our sincere thanks to the building administrators, school board members, community members, and district employees for the countless hours spent working on this throughout the summer. Our special thanks to Rika Nichols and Tina Boone. We truly appreciate their efforts and will lend us to collaborate with us. Thank you.
Thank you Sadina. I just want to say that I think everybody here understands that we can't do this without everybody involved and we appreciate your support. And lastly on our list, we have Heather Frye.
Hey.
Yeah.
I think you had said Jamie Crewerty.
I think I did.
And there's been a couple of questions that they've had in the chat.
Okay.
They're not, it's for public comment, not in chat.
So the questions in the chat, we'll leave them and we'll answer them during the, people may ask questions and we'll do that soon. If anyone wants to ask a question or a comment now though.
Can we save?
You have something?
Yeah, I've got two people on the list. The first is Tom Moes.
Okay, Tom, go ahead.
Hi, so my name is Tom Moes. I have a future kindergarten engineering school system this year.
All right, thank you.
And so my first comment was on the alternating versus consecutive cohorts. It seems like there's a lot of discussion around, you know, maintaining the more than three days between contact with students, but I just want to make sure we're looking at this through the lens of the safety concern here isn't infectious disease transmission. More and more data is coming out tying transmission to close personal contact and less about surface transmission. So it may be that we seem to be putting more emphasis on cleaning protocols and less emphasis on the time to onset of symptoms, pre-symptomatic spread, contact tracing, and those infection prevention ideas and concepts. And so when you look at that, the model that we have is going to lead to more contacts that we have to trace and a larger issue than if we had gone to, or if we reconsidered and went to a group of consecutive days. It seems like there's a good amount of support from that from the parents and the rest of the community. So I asked that we go back to CDC, main CDC has been a great resource for us through this whole thing. That's why our state's in green, in large part because of their great work. So I said we go back and ask them to reweigh in those ideas in mind. The comment that I had intended to make was about, at the top of the presentation, the, there was, it was stated that the goal is equitable access and that there's a difference between equality and equity. And I wonder if the goal should be equitable educational opportunities and equitable education. And, you know, understanding that there are all of these other food insecurity and other socioeconomic roles that the school systems help to address in our community. But it was asked in the Q and A if elementary could go Monday to Thursday. And the only argument given in response to that, and this is not my question, is that the goal is equity, not quality. And then the further argument was that it was a survey showing older students had motivational issues. We can overcome motivational issues, we could work on strategies for that, but we can't overcome is that a kindergarten, our youngest kids cannot read the remote model for those children. There's just so much less available to them in a remote model. And so I asked the committee, how is this not more of an equality model and how are we seeing this truly as equity?
The first part of your question, I'm not sure that we're qualified to answer, but you guys want to touch on the last one?
Sure. So I'm going to speak to your concern around the cohorting first and I would like to share with you and the committee that we actually have school personnel who are being trained or have completed the training for contact tracing. I'm going to let Brittany Lehman speak to that effort because we have been considering that element around the cohort decision. And Brittany, would you like to speak to the training and the advice that we're getting from that?
Sure. So the nursing staff in the district is undertaking a contact tracing course. I have completed it and the nurse at the high school completed it, so that will be done by all of our nursing staff. And we will work very closely. And we will work very closely with the CDC and the providers when we have a preventative or a positive state of COVID. We will work to assist them, be able to help coach families on what they need to do. Understanding, I do hear your concern that it's a lot of contact, and we actually did a little tabletop scenario with testing and what the contacts are and that. So it is incredibly challenging, but I am confident in my colleagues and that we can assist in doing that contact tracing that is necessary.
Related to the equity, I agree with your point that it should be about equity in education and not purely around equity of access. That is absolutely true, and I think that our RSU22 committees have been looking at that lens across all of the different aspects of this plan. What I would say to you is that it is critical for us to recognize that the education of those students that are older. We've seen many school districts have the suggestion made to them that they should consider those students go remote to open buildings and seats for the younger students. I think that we can't overstate enough that though the developmental level may be more independent, the necessity of having the guidance and the contact with in-person education is critical for their development and also for their achievement for their own levels. It's not just about equality of access across the grade levels. Christine, would you like to add anything?
Well, we talk about college preparedness and life preparedness and AP courses and the equity around that. We do have a lot of teacher expertise at that high school, but that doesn't mean that it doesn't... Those students aren't just as deserving of face-to-face instruction, and they might need that in adolescents as much as they do in their formative years. And so the research offered in the Q and A, you're right, was around motivation. But in terms of addressing the academic and social and emotional needs through remote versus hybrid, we feel like that hybrid model can be the great equalizer. When you do your research around it and teaching like, let's say, a second grader to read, because we know that that's important, and we want to have that be a focus. We can't do that at the expense of another group of students. So our goal was, how do we do both? And this was the most reasonable solution in this moment.
All right, thank you. Okay, so last one, Lester?
Yeah, and all I have here is that it's TTV Sweat is the... The thing, I couldn't get a name, so they were...
All right, so Mr. Sweat, maybe? From Mr. Sweat? All right, I guess that concludes the public comment period. That'll bring us into old business, which I believe we haven't...
We don't have any old business this evening, so we can move into discussion and next one.
So that brings us into discussing and asking all this, the plan that we have.
I would just like to say, I guess I can start. Jessica Hammond, Stephanie Berger. And I think when all of this started, I think many of us, at least myself and much of my family, thought, oh, this will pass. You know, this will all be over really soon. And so from a business perspective of, you know, operating a frontline banking store and having staff to my child being out of daycare for a period of time, my heart truly breaks with parents. I just can't imagine my child being in school and feeling the loss of what they're losing, having that in-person instruction, really building those emotional and social and mental relationships from across all spectrums. I am very disappointed that our state leadership has come to the decision that it has and that it's forced our hand. But I am very proud of our district leadership and of what we've been able to achieve in, you know, really unprecedented times. No one prepares for a pandemic, certainly not anything we woke up thinking was going to happen. But I just, I just want to say that I think the leadership has done really well, and I think, you know, based on what we have to work with, it seems like it's become a very reasonable plan that, you know, can meet the needs of the students. I would have to echo Tom, I believe it was Tom or Tim, in having consecutive cohort days. I do echo that. I do believe that that would be a safer solution, but...
All right, anyone else?
Yeah, I'll... I struggle with the cohorts as well, but I think in one of our conversations, we talked about, you know, the issue of services is declining. It's really about that prolonged exposure. So if you have a Monday, Tuesday cohort, and God forbid someone came in symptomatic on either of those days, and they were consecutive, you're actually exposing them to each other for a long period of time. I know we did talk about a scenario which if, let's say, on a Monday, the student may have developed symptoms, they actually have the ability to test and perhaps even rejoin a classroom on Thursday, give them the time to go and give them a rapid test. I don't know if that's still viable, given the availability of that testing, but it seems to me that, in fact, by not having them side to side, it's actually limiting the time spent together. And you're really just rotating that through. Again, it seems counterintuitive, but if you look at it both ways, you're really, it's about prolonged exposure, in fact. Not having it spread out and allowing time for some symptoms to be checked or diagnosed, and then maybe that student must self-quarantine or stay home. That gives us that added flexibility, you know, something I struggle with. I know some other schools are doing Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. In my mind, that creates a scenario where many students have Fridays off or they have Monday. You know, there's never going to be equity in all groups, and I think that's one of the things that the hybrid plan... It is definitely a meeting in the middle. It doesn't satisfy everyone. It also doesn't thoroughly disappoint everyone. It's not either/or. It's a little both. So what it does do is, should the state ever elevate to a, or the county, to a yellow scenario, we can continue with school unchanged. We don't have to stop and change everything because our hybrid model of capacities in the classroom can allow us almost anywhere without really any change. So to me, that was critical, except I think the amount of change has been very disruptive in most folks' lives. Because if we at least manage that change and create a system that we really do well at, that's the best we can hope to do. Again, we can monitor other schools and see how those are working. With a hybrid model, you could swing one way or the other. You could go more remote, or if one of the parents asks, what if only 50% of the kids after they saw the results of this want to return? Maybe then that entire cohort will return. Because that actually goes dead against having that prolonged contact because now you're having them there for five days a week. So again, there's two sides to this conversation. I think the hybrid model that we've mapped out is the best that I've seen that really tries to address all of those issues.
Thank you, Rob. That's a great point.
Mrs. Fay Anderson, I first of all want to say that I am absolutely amazed at the amount of communication that we've all received, that the documents that were posted are very clear and very detailed to the point where we have a good sense as to what the plan really is. My question, though, is such that I know Lester and his committee have done an amazing job on Facebook, making sure that everything goes out. But I also know that there are many parents that don't follow that forum. And so at any point, was it discussed sending this plan by mail to parents so that everyone had it in their hand per se? Or is just the form that we've been using, the form that that you plan to continue with?
That's a great question. We're going to use the LINK22 newspaper as our vehicle to get to everybody's mailbox and not just to our families, but to every resident in RSU22. And so that is going to start in earnest. As soon as tomorrow, people will be getting phone calls about having articles done.
We may want to have a motion to extend just so that we don't interrupt our...
Second.
So Jim has made a motion to extend, and Marian has seconded. I will write that down. Is Gloria...
I've got your cover.
Okay, thank you. All right, all those in favor of... Well, we have an extent... Let's extend by half an hour? If you have a clock, is all... Everyone... Okay? All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, that's unanimous. So kind of clock. All right, we were working on a discussion on our school plan. Is there any other discussion, or would anybody like to get a motion on the floor? If we get a motion on the floor, we can still discuss again, so...
I move that we accept the school reopening plan for the school year 2020, 2021, as presented this evening.
Okay. Jane has moved, and John Holmes has seconded. And like I said, now we can have discussion, if anybody wishes.
Marian.
Oh, go ahead, Marian.
Marian, the S.A. RSU22 reopening plan is what we're voting on, not the school reopening guidance.
Right.
Correct. Okay. Okay. So can I just ask one question about the school reopening guidance document on page eight? Where you're saying RSU2 is encouraging the use of outside classroom space whenever possible. It's my understanding that even if we're outside in groups, we're still going to be masked and social distancing.
If the social distance can be guaranteed beyond six feet, we will allow students to have masks off in those environments. We just need to be sure that when we are in any way gathering students back to, say, move into the building or move to another space, that masks are back on when we cannot guarantee the social distancing beyond six feet.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that regarding the masking? If you're in a room where, you know, 12 or 18 feet could be maintained, similar where we're at, although we're six feet laterally, can a mask also be removed, or we're saying not at all in buildings?
Not on buildings, except for eating. And the reason for that is that when you take the mask off, you are potentially right, aerosolizing in that environment, so we don't want to have that.
Never, never inside regardless of spacing?
Correct, unless you have a medical accommodation or there is a new guidance that came out, I think it was this week, that if a student, a special education student, is in a situation where they need a restraint, we are not allowed to have that student's mask on. It needs to be removed for any restraint procedure.
I guess I'd like us to keep an eye on that one because I believe the guidance still says where social distancing is not possible for masks. And if we're at double the distance of 12 or even 18 or even, you know, across a room, it seems to me that if that situation occurs, planned, you know, four people in a room that normally holds 50, you might have an opportunity to readdress that situation because it just seems almost going too far. And there are situations where I'm sure facial expression is important for some classes, and we might look at how to adapt to that.
Just to build on that a little bit, there is the plan masking in the day, right?
Yes, and that's required.
If we can't get outside, how would that happen?
We will be going outside.
Rain or shine?
Rain or shine. And so the operations committee talked at length about, for instance, renting tents. We did look into that option. We've decided not to move forward with that particular rental, but to invest in finding ways that we can get students outside, including down to the point of purchasing rain gear if we need to, to take kids out. Students love recess. They like to have that opportunity. I've found over the years, you don't see children that shy away from going outside even when it's raining. It's generally the adults that want to look twice, of course, because we don't want to get wet. So we're going to look into how we can get them out there. And we do have covered spaces in many of our buildings that we could take smaller groups at a time.
So I am very concerned that the plan that we're voting on doesn't include a section on the protocol, I guess is the word I want, for what happens when a child is sick in school. I know it's in the reopening guidance, but it's not in the plan itself, and I think that's a critical piece that needs to be in the plan.
The plan is what's required by the state, correct?
Yes.
Rika?
Yes, it is. So that's why. And the state guidance changes often, so I think it would be difficult to... That's a moving target with CDC guidance, the plan on how to handle things. So I... What we're voting on, I'm comfortable voting on because I feel as though that is concrete and less likely to be fluctuating as quickly. So that's my thought on it, but also looking at what's required by the state in terms of board approval.
One thing I will say, Marian, is that in the plan itself, section number one and section number six, from our vantage point, section number one is setting up the situation that if we evaluate or a family evaluates that their child has symptoms, it's going to be the trigger that launches us into the protocol to make sure that we're addressing students who are sick. And then item number six is what's going to evaluate return to school after an illness. So from our perspective, the triggers are in this plan to get us to the specifics that you're noting in the guidance. But the reason that we did not want to attach the guidance so fully is exactly what Karen said, that some of these protocols could change by state guideline, and we just want to be able to have the flexibility around that. But our intention is fully to operate the guidance.
I guess my point is not that it's not so specific that it would really address the step-by-step or procedure, but the fact that there is nothing in the plan that addresses a staff member or a student who would start feeling sick while they're at school and what we would, what the process would be, which is, of course, as we said, to put them in isolation and then to send them home. That's just not in here, and I'm not comfortable with the plan without that.
One of our teachers, I think we had a comment that she felt, some of them felt that once a week to, for the teachers to not only learn to teach their lessons online and in person and also checking on students who need to be checked, it might not be enough. She also commented that, you know, she felt, like we all know, that they were doing a lot and we're wondering if they would be compensated for all that they have been doing. I just want to make sure that the district realizes what the teachers have been doing and that I want them to feel supported, so...
So we actually spoke with EA22 today, and we heard concerns and what their expectations are around extra work. And so we started a discussion that we intend to continue next week around what defines extra work. And so an example that was brought up in that meeting was if you have a teacher who has a typical classroom, so they're having Cohort A and Cohort B, they have Wednesdays to plan their remote, but we might ask them, oh, could you use your planning time to teach a remote class for us for the students who choose 100% remote? That would be an extra, and we would want to be discussing how we would compensate for that. So I would say to you that I feel confident those discussions are in the works. But I also want to go back to what Tina brought up earlier tonight, and that is that as far as the feelings that go along with doing new things, it always feels challenging, and it is like we're all new teachers starting again. So we hope that the Wednesday planning is something we've never seen in traditional school before. So we have seven... So we have seven hours to shake to make sure that teachers have time to do these new things. We're really hopeful that we can prioritize the time for them to be able to do that in addition to having students be intervened with as needed.
And Reagan, from a budget perspective, I suspect that we can tap into some of the CARES Act if it can be qualified properly to cover some of that. I think to look to the current budget and taxpayers particularly, we are all in this together economically. We have private sector business families who are working harder making last. I think we are all, everybody in this room, we're all dealing with COVID. It's just, it's time that we never allocated in our lives for anything, business-wise, family-wise, anything. And to expect, we have to be careful that we, we, we look at this, we're all in this together economically, families, teachers, everyone's done yeoman's work and it's just been, again, it's like the first day out, how do we, is there a way to do things more efficiently perhaps? You have one teacher's recording to be shared to a different cohort and maybe that's alternating so that the same content is delivered, but it's not necessarily two people duplicating the same thing and that provides maybe some more time. Again, how do we get creative in doing it so that it's just not automatically doing more? Maybe it's just being smarter at how we're doing it. That's tough when the rules keep changing and stuff. But again, if it truly is extra and way over above, I think we have to find a way to see if we can qualify some of that under the CARES, at least through December, because that's the level, the one you can tap into those funds. Is everyone here familiar with the amount of that, that grant that was identified? Or at least we have to seek it.
We have to seek it. So it's Corona Relief Fund and RSU 22, that is $1.8 million. You do have to be proactively applying by August 30th and you have to be predictive about what you would not only expect to spend, but utilize by December 31st. So the turnaround time, and you aren't going to support a year-long position with Corona Relief Funds because of the timeline. So we're having to be very thoughtful and also cautious because you don't want to be in a position of something you cannot sustain.
Can I give them a second or a second to read?
So for example, initially, when you want to support teachers in technology, you think about adding a new position to be able to do that. And at our summer training, we talked about the change rubric and how we want sustainable change. And so when we ran it through that decision-making process and then consulted again with Nate, instead of hiring one person for the entire year because Corona Relief money does run out in December, but also because we need to front-load teachers with the support.
Yes.
If we hire just one person, how are they going to get to all staff members? So instead, if we designed a position that was a stipended position and we asked one person from every single building who was an expert in the platforms that we're trying to use, who teachers could find available in addition to our technology physicians, because we already have K-8 technology integrators. But because we're asking them to do something different, we're also approaching it differently and providing different tiers of support for classroom teachers. So each bill that we will post soon, once we get a job description and once we get the approval of the plan for the Corona Relief Fund, do, when did you say, August 30th? Then we'll be able to post these positions and it would be six hours a week for the first nine weeks and then we can assess again, do we still need that level of support? But in addition to that, because if we do professional development the first week, all-around technology, that's our tier-one intervention. Tier-two is that building person who is stipended. And then we would look at a halftime position that could be pre-K through 8 and go from teacher to teacher on an as-needed basis for real targeted instruction. If a teacher is really struggling to use the platform or keep pace, then we could send that staff person directly to them. So we would have three different ways that we would support teachers in technology using this, these funds.
Well, I like that idea of the stipend or the, it's on the figure where you have these units because we could predict what those costs might be. And I assume you only get reimbursed for them if you actually use them. Then it's not attached to a specific person, it's attached to school. And then again, we're identifying it as a potential resource, but it's not the case where now you're paying for something that may not be used, you're only paying for it as it's used and necessary. That's a great approach.
And so let's say one school really finds that position valuable and they want to continue with it, then we can do another nine weeks. And so we're going to constantly reevaluate who needs what and how we spend that money wisely.
All right, is there anybody that hasn't spoken that would like to comment on this?
I want to go back to one of the slides that showed the circle. That this plan is not a static plan, that it's a plan that's going to be adjusted. So if teachers are working too much and, and the workload is too much, then the administration of the buildings will take a look at that and reevaluate how to do that. So it's not something that's like, this is the plan, we're done with it till June. And so that's an important thing to consider as well. And that goes for instruction, operations, and the health and safety of the, of the students and staff as well.
I'd like to make an amendment to the motion. I'd like to amend the motion to include a section that ever so briefly talks about what will happen when a student or staff member becomes sick while at school.
Becomes sick while at school or is sick while at school?
Is, I guess, would be better.
Yeah, is would be.
Not that they come to school but feeling sick, but then halfway through the day, all of a sudden, they are feeling sick. So.
Are, are you seeing a portion in the guidance that you like around that as a starting point for others to look at?
Well, you did address it.
It's section six, managing a positive COVID.
But this is, this is before it's even diagnosed as COVID. This is when a child is presenting at school with a runny nose. What is it that we are going to do?
So can you be more specific on your amendment? Can you be, can you rephrase that?
So I would like to amend the plan to include a statement regarding a staff member or student in, who, who presents in school with symptoms while they're present at school.
So Marian has a motion, we will hear a second before we discuss it.
A second.
In a second if that, so that opens up some discussion.
Brittany.
Brittany, speak to this.
Hi, so we have Marian reflecting on the guidance that we have done, which our nursing staff is very well-trained to do a nursing assessment, which is not any different than what we would do on a normal day with any sick child. We can bullet it, but it's, it could be extensive that what we have to write down in that, what you're looking for.
No, all I'm saying is just what you said, that one statement that say should a child or, or staff member present at school with symptoms, a nursing assessment will be conducted. That's it. If that's in the plan, I would be happy.
Beautiful.
So do you, do you want to withdraw your motion or?
No.
No, that's what I want the motion to say.
I can use slide now.
All right, so.
So now we have to vote on the motion.
We get to work from the inside out.
I guess, I guess I'm confused if it's already something that we're doing, my view, but, but it is.
So her motion, her motion just is to add that language to the plan. And then if that motion passes, then the new motion on the floor is to pass the plan with the amendment.
Vote on the amendment first, no?
Correct.
Click the matrix.
I learned it the hard way.
So are there any discussion, any additional discussion? We'll vote, we'll vote on the amendment and then we'll go back to the main motion. So all those in favor of the amendment?
I, I only have one minute.
All those opposed. Do you want to do the opposed?
Yes, yes.
All those opposed, too.
Oh, all those opposed, let's just do the all those opposed. So, itching.
Do you abstain? Any exceptions?
John is abstaining.
And Alan.
And Alan.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so that takes us back to the main motion.
So did it pass?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes. So that takes us back to the main motion. And if there's no other discussion, is there anybody else who wishes to discuss, comment, or anything? I, I just want to say really quickly that, you know, I think this vote doesn't necessarily reflect how we all feel politically, but it is what it is, passed down by our, our state leaders and we're, we're charged to take the best of what we get from leadership and budget and do with it what we can here in our district. So that being said, there's no other comments, we'll take a vote.
Well, I, I approached it as well as he, I expected, I really came from a perspective of seeing more in school, but as the issues played themselves out from a spacing standpoint, it's pretty clear that a hybrid model had to be developed. One thing I would say is that if we reach and we vote positively on this tonight, I think we've heard from a lot of the parents that some of the mail-in questions and all that are coming out and ensuing FAQ that we will release so that they can decide. I think it's critical that if we do vote in favor, that we continue to move as quickly as we have to push it out there, whether it's through Link 22 or others, so that the waiting is over and people can get together as families to make that decision. I think that's going to be critical. I would also, and I hate to nitpick, but I really would drill down. The DOE website may not be, may have missed a word during the CDC guideline on where social distancing is impossible with masks. I think, again, if we're in a situation where we keep a room that's designed for 100 and can winnow it down to eight, there has to be an opportunity for us to, to de-mask because I think that's crucial to getting back to what feels like a school situation.
So I, I just wanted to say for me in closing, that I am just totally astounded, I mean agape, at the amount of information and the work that all of you on the board and all the staff have put into thinking about every aspect of what we are attempting to do here. And I just want to applaud Reagan and Christine and the rest, Brittany, everyone for all that they have done. It's almost looked like a 24/7 exercise that you have undertaken and I truly am astounded. So bravo and thank you for everything, everything you've done.
I think there's also a testament to be made to, as we were in Google meets and I was following the chat, it amazed me how much staff was interacting with parents. To be able to answer the questions that they had in a very clear and concise way. And that shows the amount of time that administrators and staff have also dedicated, besides the staff that's here, meaning the staff that was online. The amount of time and thought process that went into this is just amazing. And so that's a testament to our leadership and it's a testament to our staffs.
All right, that brings us to a vote. So all those in favor, or the full reopening plan, all, all those in favor?
Has amended, right?
Has amended, correct, that's right.
Yep. Okay.
And opposed? With Jessica and Tony. Did we have any extension? Okay, with Jessica and Tony. All right, so that passes. All right, that takes us to, we have a couple more items on the agenda. One of them is the school question, there isn't a second.
Right, Kathy would have participated through Google Meet if we were still there. And so we do have in your folders, the write-up she did, shows the importance of still having a hard copy, right? So after reviewing the meal prices, we are recommending that we have a 15 cent increase. We are required to do an annual review if our prices are staying in line with regional expectations. And RSU 22 has been incredibly conservative around lunch pricing. And so each year Kathy and I talk about the fact that we are literally supposed to be raising prices every year by more than we ever have asked. So this is certainly moving at 15 cents. The expectation is that we continue to move in that direction and we've tried to be conservative yet again this year.
Want your clarification? In, in the past, we are supposed to have been raising our prices more each year?
Yes.
Even though we have not been losing money?
Correct, but the recommendation is that because of the federal subsidy for school lunch programs, there is an expectation that your districts stay in line with certain price brackets. And so we've always tried to stay on the lowest end of the bracket as possible.
Is it also that some of the expenses of the lunch program have been paid for by other funds, such as replacing stoves with the monies made for the bill for buildings and not necessarily for the food programs?
That's right, our facilities.
And so that's one way they're saving or not losing money because other programs or other sources of funding are supporting the program and we're trying to move it to funding itself.
Is it, didn't we get some state funding to help with providing food during the spring of the year?
That, that subsidy. Yes, we did, we received almost full reimbursement. So we did not have significant costs during that time period because of the reimbursement. But moving forward, that will not continue.
Oh, that won't, that was my next question.
Correct, so free and reduced delivery of remote meals will be allowable for reimbursement, but anyone else who does not qualify will need to preorder the meals and pay for them at regular pricing.
I also noticed in the Q and A document you sent out today that parents can request meals for when students are at home.
Yes.
And that it only be on a request only, is that correct?
Correct.
And Reagan, historically, we have portioned always since then reverse. It's just this one almost a blanket without any, you know, pre-qualifiers, right?
Correct.
That wasn't a change, but we've always had reimbursement for, from a budgeting perspective. It's just that it was much greater, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to, and then open it up for discussion, please. I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommended 15 cents for the lunch program as outlined in the doctor.
Give us one of the John.
I just have a question on, how often do we reevaluate the income? I'm assuming this is income-based. Just given the times that we're in and the model that we're deciding on, it seems pretty important that we have some level of ability to reevaluate that for families that may have to go part-time. I've heard some parents are going to have to get done their jobs. So I'm just looking to better understand like how, how often will we reevaluate that to make sure that we're reaching those families and that, you know, we're evaluating that to meet the children's needs.
So two, two ways. First of all, the sliding scale that's used to qualify for free and reduced lunches is a federal scale, so that is reevaluated on an annual basis. And so we receive that scale from the program. And then secondly, Kathy works incredibly hard to try to solicit getting people to the table to discuss possible qualification. So she does that online, we've tried to do things at open houses. Now there's a new anonymous application form online which we didn't have before. And we've been trying to advertise that so more people will at least attempt to fill it out to see what the result could be.
I think my, and maybe I just want to clarify this, you say annually, but I mean,
You can submit paperwork anytime.
Be impacted in two months or four months.
Tina's just answered that.
You can submit any paperwork anytime. If your status says a family changes and your income changes, and I know it happened a lot last spring to families, then you can get that. a lot last spring to families, then you can get that paperwork anytime, and we can update it in a short turnaround.
Any other discussion?
Just, you go ahead.
All right, seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Tony's opposed. Any extensions? All right. That brings us to our third item there. We need to approve the declarations of votes from the four communities that we had back in July. We just need to make a motion to approve those, and then we need to all sign those. If we can put a motion up to the floor.
Can I clarify?
Yes.
The declaration that we're voting on is that we are recognizing that due to the fact that our budget did pass in all four towns, we are now assessing the taxation related to the passage of the vote.
So...
All right. So that's going to have to come around to what, if it's John, if we all sign?
No, there are multiples, because we need one for each of the towns.
All right, we do need to vote him on it.
Yes, we do.
All right, all those in favor? Vote? Any extension? All right.
Okay, so I'll be coming around with these. They need to go around the room, we need to sign in the same order, and you know the drum.
Are we sanitizing them in between each signature? Because everybody's going to be touching them. What about the piece of paper? You're touching it. I mean, if we're going to stick to DOE guidelines...
Just can't sanitize after you touch the paper. There's can't sanitize the...
Why not before you touch it?
While we're doing this, that brings us to questions of board members, so...
You're actually signing five, because you're going to sign in a testation that the budget passed.
We're signing five, we don't have five towns, but we are signing five.
One of them is just saying, yes, I see the vote passed.
Actually, are we contemplating getting with this?
Let's reopen for four, and then we'll see.
Does anybody have any questions, board members?
I actually didn't.
We'll let you do that, then, we'll wait if anybody... You do have one?
I had a question, it was just regarding the CARES Act funding, and this is something that we don't have to just resolve tonight, because we have a pending debate. I do understand from some of the news out there, some states and some schools are trying to use that for specific childcare related to earlier comment about families that may not have a choice. And I guess our two options are, if we have a classroom that isn't half the 50% level, and there is no other option, could a trial actually tend on four days? And if we say no, then childcare or some support for that, could we explore that through CARES Act fund? Is there maybe some families that financially, that's not possible? And then if childcare, this is a loaded question, if supporting childcare is possible, we talked, I think, is it possible to just supplement another existing program, maybe with an embedded teaching or educator, so that they're getting the content while they're in childcare as well, so they're not having this... I mean, can we, the question is, can we at all direct it towards a childcare function to help families that may not have any of the authority?
So two layers here. CARES Act is certainly coming to school districts, but CARES Act is also federal funding that is occurring outside of school districts too. And there is an avenue for childcare subsidy that is not directed through the school district, it's through, I think it's facilities, DHHS. And so today, I just sent that information to a family to assist them in trying to get the application completed, and we're going to be advertising that, because the money is still in existence, and we want people to seek it. It is income sliding scale based, and looking at the parameters of it, I think that it seems like it could help people who certainly are in our district, and I hope that people take advantage of it. Thirdly, I would say that the state is advising us that they're certainly hopeful that districts do exactly what we did, try to facilitate that there are partnerships in the area for provision of daycare, and that we're helping to facilitate it, and we've done that. The problem is, to use school district-based CARES funding, it has to be an equitable distribution. And so for us to be able to decide how that would occur is something that we would need more time to discover, and it might be better to support, as we've discussed in Resource Committee, facilities and programming rather than subsidy directly to families. Because I'm not sure that's actually going to be provision that we can...
Well, that is another avenue.
Is that your signature?
Yep, yes.
Typical office.
Get it duplicated.
Every family is like, individually, in a tense, serious scenario where everyone is treated. So I don't know how to present it. But I know the channel which the funding goes, and it either qualifies or doesn't, but I'm pleased to hear that we found maybe another avenue, maybe just getting it through Link 22 now.
And it's not going anywhere. Better homework with our legislators, and they're assuring us that, like, I didn't want to, we didn't want to put it out as a resource and then say, but it ends in October.
Right.
So they're expecting that that will be sustained.
All right, any other questions from board members?
Reagan, at one point, I had asked about the plexiglass, or you had said that we were delayed in getting the plexiglass, is that still where we're at?
So we have ordered it, and we are being told that the shipping date could have it here in time for school to start. And we called around to different providers to see how that, how we could do best on shipping date. And Rob helped us out with that, too. So our fingers are crossed, but I'll tell you, we're finding that delivery dates for PPE, people are saying what they believe is true, and then the trucks don't show up, so fingers crossed.
Ours did arrive as promised, which was amazing, and the packaging was over the top. I think they could have shipped it, you know, quicker with less expense, but they wanted to get there on the day.
All right. Motion to adjourn?
Second?
We got it in the calendar.
Yeah, well, is there any meeting that we need here?
Yeah, the Education Committee is meeting on the 19th at 6 o'clock. It's not on the calendar. I think Gloria does know it, it may be on the website.
It's on the district, on the website, so too, but I just wanted to make sure that here.
When did you say, I'm sorry, Jane?
19.
The 19th.
About at 6 o'clock, please.
6 o'clock, yes.
I do want to make an announcement to Building Committee members that we are slated for a meeting on Friday morning. As of right now, we do not have any bids returned for the paving, so dependent on how that shakes out, we may end up postponing the meetings. We'll need to have it once we actually do have the...
I just want to say once again, I know that we thank our staff and everybody that's worked so hard to get this plan together, but, you know, Reagan and Tina are only 40 days in on their official positions, and they've spent a large amount of it on this. This wasn't a casual walk through the park, so thank you very much for all the time and the nights and weekends that you guys have spent on this. We very much appreciate it.